Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to which is said, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us today as we convene the business of the county. Take time and look over our shoulder and make sure we make decisions that are proper. And help us continue to serve all of the people. And if you have a little extra time, maybe shove that storm a little farther south and give us a little bit of rain. We would certainly help and appreciate and know that you are truly always with us at all times. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob. Did you have particular hours you wanted the rain or anything? I just, no, I didn't know if we were specific enough on that.
Now they're getting bigger.
Tell you what, just because he has the time clock, he doesn't have complete control.
Oh. We have some fun here, Marcus, as you can tell. No real earth-shattering comments for the chair's comments this morning, but I do welcome each of you. And if this isn't the official first day of spring, it's real close. I never know from one year or the other what day that is. I guess they look at the moon or the stars or something and determine that. For the commission's benefit, just to call your attention to one thing on consent agenda, just so we are on the same page. That's not a misprint on the 2021 on the crack ceiling contract. It was an oversight. The contract was given and issued and the vendor signed it, but we just forgot to sign it here. So it's just a correction of an oversight, but that 2021 is, is the correct date. I just wanted to clarify that with everybody. With that, we're gonna jump right in. Oh, go, oh. Oh. Oh, I don't know. I noticed we, I noticed we intentionally left off a couple.
Larry's the one that created that item and we could, we could ask him about it unless you've got someone.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'd, I'd like to also add Southwind to that. We've had a lot of comments out there that people have moved from the city out there and they don't have an opportunity to have that cleanup. And so if we could possibly include that also, that would be another good opportunity to get some areas cleaned.
Okay. Well, with, with that and with the consideration of a couple of other places for spring cleanup, then I would ask for approval of items on a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the items on consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is public comment, and I know we have at least one, but public comment is for anything that is not on our official agenda for today. And, and I did forget to ask in my comments, are there any other things that the board would like to see on the agenda for today? I wasn't aware of anything, but I am remiss in not asking. So with that, we'll go into the public comment time. And I know we have one that asked for time today and we may have others, but again, anything that's not on the official agenda. And we just ask that it be fairly brief and respectful, so thank you. And, and as you come, and I know we know Vicki, but for those online and everything, please say your name and, and if you're representing a particular organization.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Vicki Gurman. I'm here today representing the Fannie County Board of Zoning Appeals. And we've had several issues with the Board of Zoning Appeals and I know the Planning Commission as well. Couple of issues actually. The conditional use permit that we have decided to allow in the county for people to park their trucks. You know, we're trying to do a good thing and I think it is a good thing, but it has presented some challenges. With the neighbors complaining, upset that things aren't being done as they should be. At our last one, we actually had the neighbor saying, please don't issue any more of these until you get something worked out with regard to enforcement. And I think that's probably our big challenge. I don't know what your thoughts are as far as whether to continue to issue those permits or put that on hold. I'll, I'll let you gentlemen decide what's best, but it certainly isn't working as well as we had anticipated. And along those lines, the code enforcement seems to be lacking in the city and in the county. And I know there are some challenges with that and there are issues that you have to do things a certain way and I understand that. But just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if there's anything that we can do. I think that if we would work together, maybe we could come up with a solution that works for everybody. So we heard a lot of complaints. I hear a lot of complaints as a Realtor. You know, I sell people a house in a certain area and then they're calling me up saying, Vicki, this truck driver's parking over there and he's letting his truck run and he's doing oil changes or he's, you know, just all kinds of, of issues and piling up tires and things like that. The conditional use permits say, you know, you can't do that. They have only certain things that they can do, a lot of things they cannot do. But, you know, people get lax, I guess, and, and aren't doing things the way they're supposed to. And once that gets turned in, as I understand it, it's difficult to enforce it. It's, it's, takes quite a while, but I've had people that come before our commission, you know, have said, we've complained and complained and it doesn't do any good. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm also gonna talk to the city officials about it as well and see if there's something that we can do collaboratively to make that a better situation for everybody. So thanks for your time today.
So the, just, and we're, we, as I said to you, when you asked to be in public comment, we really don't get into discussion.
Right.
Debate or anything, but I just want to clarify and then I'll see if the other commissioners want to put it on as an item someday, someday in the future. Is, is just simply the enforcement after we've issued conditional use permits is, is the concern you're expressing? Am I correct in that?
Enforcement of code violations in general.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. And I have one favor to ask on the spring cleanup, if Highland addition could be in that as well. Thanks.
Yeah, and, and just for information on the spring, thank you Vicki and Larry, I'll get to. On the spring cleanup, we, in our subdivision, we, we hire or pay for dumpster, two dumpsters actually that come out in May. And, and so we, in our subdivision, we do it on our own, not as part of the, of the spring cleanup. But I think it's Lee or somebody that's willing to work with us on that. Larry, did you have a?
Question, didn't, we used to have a code enforcement, enforcement officer.
We did.
That was on staff.
We, we still pay for one, do we have one?
We have just one for the county and city, correct or not?
So, yeah, Trent Maxwell, Director of Neighborhood Development Services. So we have one and we currently operate on complaint based for all three jurisdictions.
One person, three jurisdictions. Thank you, Trent, appreciate that clarification. So with that, no, with that, public comment is just that, just comments to us, not anything actionable and so forth. But my question, just like I did on KNRC last time, is it something that we think's important enough to have as an agenda item sometime in the next, on a subsequent meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For those online, this Dave speaking, the issue is, it, it was on the radar before I became a commissioner 12, 13 years ago. It's not gone away. We've had complaint based, that works probably better than turning the, the inspector loose and letting them run all over the county and, and write citations. That caused a lot of angst. So I think maybe the answer to not get into debate here, but maybe this is something needs to be placed on an agenda. And, and we work on, on a fix and ask the Planning Commission for some input.
Is that a consensus of all of you?
Agreed.
All right, we will make that an agenda item sometime here in the next two or three meetings. Okay. Any other public comment that's not on our agenda?
All right, I would just comment on that one of all.
You just meet, you just beat Leonard, no, I.
Sorry, Leonard of all, Fannie County Economic Development, the truck parking issue. I, I think it's just important that we remember that typically the reason we have those issues is because there's not an alternative for some of those folks. And so that is one of the things that we're working on as we develop the Western Kansas corridor, is creating some opportunities where we could have legal places for folks to, to do truck parking. So it makes it a little easier to enforce it if you have a, a solution that actually works for them. So just know that we're working on that too and we'll certainly bring you guys more information as that comes together. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification as well. Leonard? Oh, okay. You've, you've always been so polite. Please.
I'll be real quick.
Yeah, please state name for people.
My name is Leonard Hits and I'm on the Board of Zoning Appeals and on the other one, whatever it's called. Holcombe Garden City, Fannie County Planning Commission. And what Vicki has said, I'm gonna say ditto. I'm gonna make it short, but I, on both these boards, I understand, and a lot of times we are put in the position of a paper tiger. But I understand that the solution is not going to be a quick fix. And it's gonna have to be coordinated effort between not only the Fannie County, but also the city. And there is solutions out there, but it's gonna take some work. And I think that anything that I can do or whatever, these are not paid positions, so I'm used to working for free. But if anything that I can do to help this situation and solve these problems, we're gonna continue to grow as we're projecting we're gonna grow. We need to protect the integrity of our property values. And some of these places I see, talking about spring cleanup, but if there was some more of that, a lot of these problems might disappear also because a lot of these people don't have the money to haul all that to the junk or whatever. Anyway, like I said, ditto to what Vicki said.
Thank you, Leonard, appreciate that. And, and we do very sincerely appreciate your service and Vicki, yours as well, because yes, they are very high paying jobs. Come on up. See you, Steve.
My name is Steve Michael and recently, here in the last couple of months, I was appointed to the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we have talked about this at every meeting we've ever had. And part of it is in the, the enforcement and that's the worst part of it, okay? We, the complaint part of it works fine, but we don't have anybody to enforce it, okay? And the way I see it and from what I've heard is that, you know, we probably need one to three more people to do this. A complaint comes in, it needs to be listed as a case number, call it that, and followed through. We have people who have come to us and said, I have complained for the last 10 years and nothing has ever happened. And there's a lot of areas out in the county and a lot of them in the city, and people make complaints and nothing happens. Well, that's just not working. I think it's a manpower issue and that's what I've been told. It, they just don't have enough time or enough personnel to do this. So that's what we need to consider. I think you people control the purse strings for that type of budget. But it's been that way for quite some time and we need to address it. Thank you.
No, appreciate your comments about that, Steve, and, and thank you for your service on the board as well.
May I make one quick comment? Steve, that's not, where did Steve go there is? To me, it's not an issue easily fixed, but right now, if there is a, is a ticket issued, if you will, a complaint, it goes to district court. And my gosh, you talk about being slow in 10 years. We need to consider some kind of a new system rather than, than what's in, in place.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like there's a lot of moving pieces in this. And if we try to handle that from this level, it may take a long time. If we could get the stakeholders, the people who are conditional use people, the people who are controlling that deal with the neighborhood development, the people in planning and zoning, and have them get through in economic development and work on the problem and come forward with potential solutions and then be it in. and then be it an impact on budget or whatever else like that, I think we would get somewhere a lot quicker than if we just try to take each individual deal and try to decide what it looks like when they bring it here.
And Bob, you must have been reading my notes, because I have written down here agenda item and a task force, so yes.
I can't see that far, but yes.
But yes, we're, our thinking is along the same line, yeah, yeah. Any other public comments for things not on today's agenda? Okay. With that, I believe that we have a public hearing for a road thing. And Dory, mechanically, do we need to, is, this, this is a part of our regular meeting. We don't need to adjourn and reconvene or anything, do we?
Correct, correct. You stop in the public meeting, or the public hearing.
So, and, and I'm gonna turn to Robert and, and Dory to kind of lead the discussion, but we will open the public hearing for the road petition under the name of Spear. And it's twenty-three forty-five South Old Highway eighty-three in Fannie County. And there's a map up on, map up on the screen as we speak. So Robert, I'll look at you first, and then we'll go from there and hear public comments.
All right, very well. You did receive it within your packet, the summary of the, of the road viewing that took place on March fourth. Myself, as well as our new Public Works Director and Commissioner Dave Jones met and reviewed and met with participants, petitioners down there as well at the road viewing. And as you can see within the memorandum back to the Board of County Commissioners, the recommendation was to deny that specific public road opening with the caveat that they would, it could be reconsidered once the minimal guidelines for the improvements were met. As you recall, that is a forty-foot, there's approximately forty feet there of easement that would, that could be used. Your county standards are sixty-foot with the possibility of asking the, the petitioner to go ahead and approach once again the north and south landowners for some additional footage there. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think we need to hear from the petitioner, and then we'll.
And just be, just before we do, I, I wanna look to Dory, mostly for the people online, but also for people in the audience who have not received the packet and have seen the memo, or maybe haven't seen the memo. But we, the process, and after a little bit of confusion, we got the process right, was to say whether or not the petition was in good order, and it was. And then we had to publish, or have the viewing and then publish and so forth, and all of those requirements were met. Is that correct?
That's correct. All requirements were met.
Okay, all right. Now we'll open it to, to public comments, and, but we need to set the stage. So thank you for your patience, and again, for the record, make sure that, state name so we can get it.
Garrett Spear, we, we filed this petition.
Right. Go ahead, yeah.
So in light of Robert Reese's comment about moving to the south or to the north, we've exhausted those efforts, and it's not a possibility. This is our, this is the last option we have. We've owned this property since early 2015, so this is not a, this is not something we started four or five months ago. We've been at this for quite some time. And with, with the forty feet, the, my, and as a utility, underground utility expert, I understand the sixty feet is needed for utilities. This is not gonna be the case for this access, as the power's already in overhead, and the development, potential development to the west would be septic water wells and propane tanks. So as far as a large utility corridor being needed, that's, that's not gonna happen. As we're surrounded by state ground, there's not gonna be any further development to the west. Outside of that, I, we've done everything we can on our end, so.
Okay. So with Garrett as at the podium, questions or comments? Start with Larry.
And you also have a Heinz Farm that's on the map that wants access through there too.
Correct.
So that's not a problem?
Oh, no, absolutely not. No. No, we, we work well together. Actually, Mark Lahrance is the tenant of the land and speaks on behalf of Lou Heinz. And we have had conversations over the past five years about this, and we're all on board, yes. And I own the twenty-seven acres to the west in white, which is landlocked currently. So any possibility of development doesn't exist without this. And once, once we pass the four hundred and fifty-foot section or four hundred and eighty-one feet of forty feet, it will then be sixty feet to Heinz Farm's boundary line. So we just have a little bottleneck there, but if utilities are the issue, I think we've covered that pretty well, so.
Okay. So Dave, as one of the viewers, and Kurt's sitting in the audience, if, if something comes up and you, you feel you need to make a comment, Kurt, you're welcome to do that. But Dave, let's turn to you.
Well, if that would suddenly become a county road, it needs some kind of drainage, a grater ditch, if you will, at least one. So that takes away from part of the forty feet. So it's not gonna be any, any room for a super highway there for sure. As soon as you get four hundred and eighty-one feet or whatever in from the, from the county road that now exists, the old Highway eighty-three, then there's sixty feet available. Is that right?
Yes.
The sad thing is, going out to view that, is immediately to the south of this designated forty-foot wide road is a, what I'm gonna say is wasted space. There's another fence line, as if sometime in the past, a survey had the half-section line, thirty or forty feet, whatever, to the south. And the Fancler Farm, there's a barn and a, and a kraal and so on, is built to that line, thirty or forty feet, whatever, to the south of where Mr. Spear wants to put a highway or a roadway. However, he can't get permission from, from whoever has control of that land to include that. That would be a quick fix, so, but I don't know how, how we might help get somebody to entertain the thought of, it's just sitting there growing weeds. It's not in, in the kraal, it's not in anything, except there it is, so.
Another problem in there, Dave, there's power line running right down the property line between what the strip you're talking about and the potential road.
And a natural gas pipe comes up out of the ground, but three poles in the, right of way, that's correct. But, but the power company can move poles pretty quickly.
And to do that, you're gonna wind up having to move it to half-mile, all those poles over, because they're gonna want to extend that road, correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, these are, are the facts out there now. There's, there's some land, in terms of land, that looks like it ought to be available to the south. It's just simply not for sale, so.
Anything else, Duane? Bob?
You know, I think there's a time and a place for trying to be practical on top of, this is the way we've always done it. I think with the utilities in place, and if they can accommodate the moving of the power poles, we should consider the exception for this forty-foot road.
Larry, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, I just have to agree with Bob. I think that, you know, you've got land, two landlocked people in the, that would be serviced by this road, and, and neither one of them can really access their property. And I think is, we can make an exception for this once, maybe down, in the future, they would be able to expand it.
At whose expense are the poles to be moved, though? We need to discuss a little bit.
I would think, you know, in, in any case, like any other development, there would be a developer's agreement that would be between the county and the respective landowner that wants this done. And, you know, they're not at the county expense, nor is that road. So, you know, it would have to be a developer's agreement that would be worked out between the proposed developer and the county that would outline how that would happen.
Well, and, and that kind of leads to my question, as I'm looking at Robert and Kurt, because if we're not gonna maintain it as a county road, someday is, the request's gonna come back to us to maintain it as a county road, again, that could be covered in a development, development agreement or developer's agreement. And then secondly, I, I hear about the, the ditch piece of it for drainage. Is that gonna be an issue of, on a, on a road that doesn't have some drainage? Because we don't have the easement to do that, so I guess go to those couple of points. Yeah. Garrett would, that our Public Works Director, yeah.
I guess one question I would ask is, if they're landlocked, how are they being accessed now? In essence, by de facto, they're currently being accessed through that pathway, are they not?
Well, Garrett, well, and Mark's, Mark.
I can answer that one.
Mark, this is Mark Lahrance.
I rent the ground that's owned by Heinz Farms, and currently, we're using the good graces of two private landowners, either Garrett Spear or Thatcher Vapp. And in the past, it's been in alfalfa, now it's gonna be in corn. It's a lot of truck traffic, and so far, we've had no problem. Everybody's gotten along, but we, we are pretty badly landlocked, as you can see from the map, so. That's why Mr. Heinz is in favor of it, and so am I, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. And Kurt?
Kurt Logsdon. What we're talking about this morning is whether or not we should accept this as a county road. In my experience, and I will say that most of my experience is in Colorado, but in a lot of cases like this, they should be able to handle all of their concerns through private egress and ingress easements to access those, that one landlocked portion of property. It's a little unusual for something like this, where somebody's coming forward and wanting to make it a county road for such a short section, when it can easily be handled through an egress and ingress easement.
Okay.
And on, on that, the drainage in the future would be a concern, because it is very sandy soil and stuff, and there's a pretty good grade going down. There doesn't appear to be any real drainage easements, I mean, any drainage problems right now. But I could sure see problems in the future, especially if the development takes over and anything is paved, increasing the runoff. That is definitely a place where we're gonna have erosion.
Thank you, Kurt. Ken Parks is asking to be recognized, and, and state name and who you're representing.
I think Ken Parks, I'll be the surveyor involved in plating that extra land. I can assure you, if I try to put an egress, egress easement to get to that land in the back, then I'm gonna have a lot of hangups trying to move things forward through the Planning Commission and Neighborhood and Development Services. I'd be quite surprised if they let it go through. But we'd be happy to do it, if that'll be sufficient for the county's use. We would put an egress, egress and plow the remainder property.
Yeah, and I wish Trent would have stayed, but it looks like he's disappeared this morning. Yeah, Garrett, go ahead.
We, yeah, we definitely have visited the egress, egress, and they're not allowed, is what we've been told for five years. As you can see, lots two and three are flag-lotted to the highway. I have three other buildings on that piece of property that would connect with this county road. So a, as well as the lots in the twenty-seven acres. If, if a private road will work, we just need told that, and then we'll get it done, but we've been told no thus far. And if drainage is an issue, if the road is paved in the future, we, we could do a concrete drainage way. I mean, there's, there's answers to that problem, very easy ones, so.
So back, looking back at you, Robert, and again, they're asking for it to be a county road, but what about the egress and so forth? I can't think of the language I wanna use. But making an exception to that, could, could we not do that as, as a county commission and make an exception to that through a developer's agreement?
I believe that, I believe that ends up going through your planning and zoning board, if I remember correctly. And you may be able, if they don't allow it, you may be able to make an exception through it that way. I don't know all you've approached, or who all you've approached on the private easement process.
Ken could probably better answer that, but there's the rules for plating and things, and you have to have access to a county road. That's why that we have the twenty-foot flag lots right now, because that's the minimum requirement. Well, the forty feet's used up with those two lots. So that's the reason why we're wanting a county road. That's the only reason why we want a county road. If it could be a private road, I would have done it years ago, so.
Ken, do you have anything else to add about the private easement versus, and maybe even who you've discussed that with, or, or whatever at this point? And again, I didn't think about Trent being a part of this conversation. We should have kept him in the room, but.
I don't think I'm talking out of line, but I think Trent would agree with me, and they're not gonna allow it. You have to, like Garrett says, you have to have a right-of-way, dedicated right-of-way to get to a plant, to all the lots on a plant.
And they're, they're basing that upon the rules that are in place, the regulations that are in place today?
Right, yeah, right.
Okay. Dave, additional comments?
My, my official position is, I sympathize with the circumstance. But my gosh, what kind of a precedent would we set if we say, okay, for forty feet, and the next one comes along and they have thirty-eight feet, do we say, well, tough circumstances? I mean, we've had sixty feet as a minimum for years. And there's got to be some way to, either, either enticement, encouragement, whatever. There's gotta be some way to come up with sixty feet out there, so.
Duane, any additional comments?
I guess I feel the same way about a four hundred and eighty-foot road. I don't think the county needs to have a four hundred and eighty-foot road. I think there's other options involved here somehow or another, but. Right now, I'm opposed to a four hundred and eighty-foot road. County road, county road.
Actually, he's got land that goes.
Yeah, with it, the petition was for the forty feet, because we knew that was the obstacle. Officially, the county road would extend all the way to Heinz Farm's boundary line and would turn north and go up through potentially the middle of the twenty-seven acres to the west for development. Unfortunately, that's not in front of you for representation purposes right now, because this is the obstacle we're against, so.
That makes a difference. Didn't know that.
I mean, the basis is gonna be there for property tax, certainly. You know, if we can do six house lots, or if we decide to do commercial lots, whatever that may be, we, we don't have that decision made yet, or to go to that step without knowing we can get a road.
Right, yeah. Understand that, yeah. Bob?
Do we have the opportunity, obviously, the forty versus sixty feet is one option. The second one is county road versus private road. Can we override the planning and zoning officials for a private road for that extension?
You can override them, but it takes a majority vote. It takes, more than a majority, it takes four of the five of us, I think, to agree, so. Pardon? Two-thirds, yeah, it'd be, be four out of five of them.
Robert, and then I'll get to Larry.
Okay. You know, it, it, if you, if you go by way of the, the, this being a private easement first, private road easement first, it, it does allow for additional time to potentially acquire that other twenty-foot as you go through the process of figuring out exactly what you're trying to do on that, or going to do on that west, that west acreage there, twenty-seven acres or something to that effect, if I recall correctly.
We, we, we've exhausted the efforts to the north and to the south, the twenty feet. At this time, is not an option. Don't see it being an option in the future.
But if we go by way of the, the private, it, it. But if we go by way of the private, it allows you even additional time if things should change or something soothes where we can, where you can come up with an additional 20. That way, you meet your current regs and so forth. And you still then have that access all the way back if it's private. And then as the plating process goes forward, whether that's a month from now, two months from now, a year from now, whatever the case may be, it may provide other opportunities there for that. We can always come back then and address that at future time.
Would a private, I mean, the private easement, if that were to be our consensus today, would require waiting until the planning commission process is completed and then probably overriding a decision from the planning commission because they're going to play by the rules, if you will.
Correct.
But we have the, to Bob's question, we have ultimate authority on whether or not we accept that recommendation or reject the recommendation of the planning commission.
Correct.
And would that private easement, then, would it require a developer's agreement if it went that way and that was the final resolve?
I'm not certain that it necessarily would at that point in time. You're allowing it, but I don't know whether, at that point in time, and we would check with county councilor on that. But I don't know whether it would require a developer's agreement. Just more than anything, you're allowing then that private easement, and that's really it. That's the extent of it.
Right, yeah. And that's why, but I was asking it as a question, but that's the way I would understand it, yeah. Anything else, Larry? So with that, any final comments, Garrett, or?
I think we've covered it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the commission's decision with regard to this road petition?
Well, our decision now would be to deny it and encourage them to go back through the planning commission and then develop a private road for that easement there.
Private road easement, yeah.
Private road easement, and then.
Oh, go ahead.
Then we'll proceed when it comes back.
And I'm hearing that as a motion.
Yes.
All right.
I would second that.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? So the intent of this commission, in my interpretation, is to try to help you out, but not as a county road. So I hope you understand the spirit in which we're making this decision. If there's no other discussion, please say, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Well, I'll check with Dory on this. I had a question. Okay, and is, I don't think we've had a, well, we've got a little ways from 10. We're looking at our clocks and our texts because in the state legislature today, there's supposed to be a resolution recognizing the efforts of Russ Jennings as our representative out here. And supposedly, that's happening around 10 o'clock. So if you get us looking at texts and things, that's what we're checking on. It's not that we're inattentive to what we're doing here on our agenda. Okay, is Tracy, yeah, there's Tracy. Come on up. And as Tracy is coming up to speak to us on KNRC, I will let you recognize one of your board members who's sitting with us rather than taking that opportunity away. Tracy, please, in the audience, or in the online audience, state your name and who you represent.
Yes, my name is Tracy Barton, and I am the executor of the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition. And I would like to invite Marcus Rogie, who's Commissioner, Marcus Rogie from Haskell County. And he's joining me this morning to present to you this morning.
Moral support?
Would you like to address the commission?
Sure. Thank you for having us this morning.
Stand right in front of the mic, please.
Appreciate it. Thank you for having us this morning. I'm Marcus Rogie from Haskell County Commission. And just came here to speak on behalf of the KNRC. I believe since Tracy had met with you gentlemen the last time, I believe we've added four counties to the KNRC now. And it's pretty exciting to see the momentum and see how these different counties are joining up. We'd love to have your support. We would love to have you be a part of it and help us with some of the tasks that we have before us. The KNRC, one of the special things about this organization is that it is specifically geared toward working to keep track of the federal government in the executive branch. So it's a little bit different than some of our other organizations that we as commissioners belong to. You know, the KAC, we typically deal with the legislature. We deal, you know, some of the other groups that we have. This organization, we're watching the federal government and the potential overreaches that we have seen where they pretty much run over the rules that they've been created by the legislature. So that's one of the special things about this group. They have focused on several issues. I think you have heard of most of these issues. The 30 by 30, does everybody know what that is? And the national heritage areas, does everybody know what that is? For, and then obviously, we have spoken, I believe, with your board about the lesser prairie chicken issue. There are several other issues that they keep track of. But one interesting fact about these issues is they all are interconnected. Parts of them are in the same rulebook, so to speak. They're actually in the same executive order that was signed by the president. So we are attempting to do something for this area, which is, number one, to protect our land for our constituents from government overreach. One of the things that right now they're doing is they're looking at just gas and oil being an issue. If we can't pump gas, we can't irrigate. So how are we going to feed what will eventually go from 6 billion, 7 billion to 9 billion people on this planet? Our area of Kansas is one of the greatest producers of agricultural products. This 30 by 30, which is in that same order, is where the president and his associates have decided they want to reduce our farmable acres by 30% by 2030. How are we going to feed people? So that's one of the reasons why I'm here. I'm pretty excited about this group. And I've seen the other county commissioners that have joined, how excited they are about this. And I hope we can draw your interest into this organization.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet, you bet. Tracy?
Yes, so I was here two weeks ago, and I think I met everyone except Commissioner Larry Jones. So, good morning. Are there, is there something that I can explain? Is there anything, any questions that you all have that I could answer?
Well, and Marcus has kind of outlined some topics. But just talk a little bit more about the organization and how you go about trying to lobby, if you will, for these things that may harm us. And then secondly, would you address who is on your board currently? I know a couple of the officers, but who is participating and is board members for KNRC right now?
Absolutely. So we'll start with that question. So Gary Hazlett is our current president, and he's a former representative for Western Kansas. Larry Townsend from Wallace County, Cameron Edwards from Lane County, Jim Daly from Clark County, and Bob Ryan from Pawnee County. And Commissioner Rogie is our treasurer. So the condensed version of our mission statement is that we're a coalition of counties that monitor and when appropriate intervene to reduce the impact of the federal government's overreach when it impacts member counties in the area of natural resources and land use. So we currently have 27 counties. The four that were added this month are Barton, Seward, Ness, and Stafford. So the different initiatives, you asked me to kind of explain what we're doing. So we'll start with 30 by 30. In December, we had an opportunity to actually visit the Kansas State Legislature. They had a special committee, bipartisan group, just kind of fact-finding about 30 by 30 as well as the national heritage areas. And so we were able to provide representation on behalf of our counties in presenting information that would show how the government was overreaching. And I would be happy to get you a copy of that public testimony. It is available on our website as well. So that included both 30 by 30 as well as the national heritage area. That issue that we're really working on right now is the lesser prairie chicken. And the reason that's a concern, as Marcus said, is that it's, the habitat conservation plan directed at oil and gas is going to prevent possibly gas production in Western Kansas because the cost of the permit, as it's proposed, would be around $2.5 million per project. And it would escalate throughout the years for, you know, when you add inflation, and their inflation numbers are not accurate. So we're submitting comment today on behalf of the 27 counties that we represent.
I guess that's a piece of my question. You're submitting comment to whom? Who are you trying to convince this is a bad idea?
So it's a private entity that's applying for the permit. And Suffician Wildlife Service will have final say on whether the permit is approved or not. So our comments are all being submitted to them, and then copies are going to the Department of the Interior in Washington, DC.
Part of the processes that the KNRC uses is that they use the executive branch's processes to, how do I put this? Basically, they try to cause them to follow the process as is outlined by the Congress. So they have rules that they're supposed to follow. A lot of times, they'll try to just run over that. And then this organization goes through and forces them to use that process that they're supposed to use. And in the public comments, a lot of times, they can go in and make those public comments. And then if those comments are ignored, they can then use that as a, to give them the ability to file suit and force it. So that's one of the processes that they use.
So another way of saying that is we use local government to put a check on higher government. And another issue with the habitat conservation plan is that it's a private entity, but it's also a business model for them to make money from the permit when really, a 30-year plan does not include recovery of the bird. It's planning on a perpetual listing, which is not in the best interest of the bird. So.
And then lastly, and then I'm going to turn to my four colleagues here for questions and comments. It's my understanding, from a practical standpoint, from what you said last time, the membership would be 5,000 per year.
That's correct.
As a flat membership fee for any county that's.
Yes.
And that's a calendar year membership, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So I'll look to my left first. Dave, comments?
Hello. I can agree with the principle that they're espousing here. However, $5,000 is quite a little money, and it's something we've not budgeted. So I'd be somewhat hesitant until the, until the calendar year upcoming, the next budget cycle, to ask for that expenditure.
Wayne?
I don't think I have any comments or questions.
Bob?
Do you have similar organizations, I'm going to say beyond your 26 counties, that join you in fighting this battle, or are you out here on an island?
You know, we actually have four other states that are in the process of forming similar organizations. So it's in the works. We also work with KLPG. They monitor things on a state level, as you probably know. We do partner with them when we're able to. We really appreciate their work.
Very good.
So I believe we are getting on the KCCA's agenda to discuss with them. And I believe with KAC. Did we talk to Bruce?
Yeah, but that was the one.
Okay, we'll be talking to Bruce as well, so.
I'd have to agree with Commissioner Dave that we'd have, we need to run this through our budget process. But, you know, I think all of us are in agreement that the federal government's overreached. That's a given. There are a lot of private organizations that I belong to that are fighting this 30 by 30. NCCA is one of them. And so I think you're not alone. You're not on an island. It's just you have to reach out and be in touch with them. But I do appreciate your efforts.
And then the other organization that I'm thinking of is from a national perspective is NACO, our National County Organization. I presume that you're communicating with NACO as well. And even though I understand they're working more on the legislative side and you're working on the administrative side, I get that piece for sure. But NACO, KAC, KCCA, for, I hate using acronyms, but you guys understand what those acronyms are, so. So let me ask this of the commissioners. Is there a sense, just to help Tracy and Marcus out, that there is interest in rejoining, possibly rejoining KNRC, but in the next calendar year budget? Or are we saying no? So they, trying to give them direction on whether we are interested, even though the timing may not be today, or we're not?
I guess I would go the other way. I think it's awfully important, and especially with all the conversation that's going on right now about oil and gas and all the impediments that we're having trying to get permits, et cetera. We have a Wizard of the Books over there, and we have all kinds of ways that we're spending money on all kinds of different things for legal advice and partisan-type situations. That $5,000 spent here, I think, would be a very viable alternative.
I would be able to concur with that. Other thoughts or ideas? And if not, I would entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I move that we join the NRC at this point in time.
Is there a second to that motion? I would second the motion to get it on the table for further discussion and a vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, I still believe that it needs to go through the budget process, but that's, you know, I'm not going to jump up and down over $5,000.
And I guess, whatever the vote outcome might be, it doesn't mean there's a lack of interest and we might not reconsider if it is voted down. But today, the vote is to rejoin the KNRC effective as soon as possible in this calendar year. So any other comments? Yeah.
We were members before, Mr. Chairman, and you said Jim is still part of your, of your group. A very, very interesting, well-informed individual. But what I remember and what I may be concerned about right now is we started off with one amount, and then here would come Jim every so often, and we needed a little more money. And so it got to be more and more and more. Is that, is that 5,000 it, or is there going to be?
5,000 has been consistent since its inception in 2013.
Okay. Hold your feet to the fire, Tracy.
And then the other concern, I know Larry and I both voiced it at the time we decided not to rejoin, was we thought the organization was veering off of its primary purpose. And I think that's going to be something, if we do rejoin, that we're going to watch very carefully because that's what caused us to discontinue our membership. We thought the organization was going on beyond the scope of its purpose. Did I state that fairly closely, Larry?
Could I comment on that, please? So one thing that we, you know, we've changed leadership. Jim is still participating as a senior advisor. However, one of the, one of the goals of the organization, and not really a goal, but the reason we're created is because we are formed. is because we are formed by commissioners for our counties. So, if you do join today, we would ask one of you to be kind of the representative for your county. And then, in our weekly, in our annual meetings, if you're able to participate, which we hope you would be, we, you all decide. I mean, you help define what it is that we're going to be pursuing and monitoring and, and actively engaged in. So.
I'm glad you pointed that out. And I know Marcus went to his first annual meeting and was named treasurer, so I know that process. I know that process works. So, that aside, the motion is to rejoin KNRC in this, in this budget year. And all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Oh, shoot. I, I said I'm not going to argue with $5,000.
And all oppose, nay?
Nay.
And motion passes 3-2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And do you have someone that would want to, that would volunteer to participate?
It has to be an aye vote that is appointed to the committee.
That's one way to get out of.
I agree.
Oh, my gosh.
He said, "Thank you."
Well, he's pointing to me. He thinks I've got more free time than he does. So.
We would love to have all the input, though, that you can bring anytime. I mean, that's part of.
Put me on your list. I think you have my card, or Dory has my contact information.
Very good.
I've got you.
Thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
It was your sales pitch, Marcus. Yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you for Haskell County being a good partner with us in this region, too, for a lot of different things. Thank you. Please relay that to your fellow commissioners.
I will do that. Thank you very much. See you guys.
The next thing that we have on the agenda is, we've been asked to sign an agreement with Workforce One. And normally, we wouldn't have Workforce One on the agenda. But I, and I just noticed that our screens went blank. I don't know what that means from a technology standpoint. Well, yeah, there was some message on there as they went blank. But anyhow, we felt it was important, even though we have a board member, a person from our commission as a board member on the, the elected officials board, I felt as chair that it was important for Deb to be present with us today, and she is by Zoom, to just go over Workforce One a little bit, explain what this agreement is about. And I believe the agreement goes until 2025, if I'm not mistaken. So, Deb, are you with us now?
I am. Good morning. I do have a black screen, but that's okay. I can see you guys on YouTube, so we're good.
And we have black screens here, so we're just listening to you and not watching you at this point. But Deb, I'm going to turn it over to you. And we've got people here in the room, and we've got people online that maybe don't even understand what Workforce One is all about.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for letting me join you, particularly via Zoom. I'm always amazed, listening to your agendas, all the things that you guys become experts at, and all the decisions you make as commissioners. So, thank you for your service to your county. So, there's quite a big packet of information that we send on. I also did send Dory, and thank you, Dory, for facilitating me getting together with the committee this, this morning. What I sent you this morning was just kind of a very specific update report on what we've been doing in county, in, in Fannie County over the last program year, so that you're kind of aware of that. But to go back to just a review, Kansas Workforce One is a nonprofit board that is tasked with facilitating and organizing workforce development services funded by the federal government in, in our respective local areas. Local Area One is the 62 counties in western Kansas. And so, we are all the way from the south-central middle of the state, all the way to the Colorado border, and then Nebraska and Oklahoma as well. So, we cover 62 counties in western Kansas with, with federal tax dollars. But what happens is those funds are accepted by the governor on behalf of each of the counties in the state. So, on a fairly regular basis, we are tasked with reaching out to the counties to sign an agreement. So, number one, you're aware that these services are being provided in, in your county, on the behalf of, of your constituents across each one of the counties in the, in the state. But then, also making you aware that there is a financial responsibility, not that I'm here to ask for money, because we're not here to do that. But if there was any, what we would call disallowed costs, then basically, if those things happen in your county, the county would be responsible for recouping those costs. If the LWIB was not able to recoup the costs in another way, you have other funds, as well as bonds, to cover those types of things. Along with the packet of information is our most recent fiscal audit that shows that we are a low-risk entity, and we have no exceptions, no finding of any type of disallowed costs. I've been doing this for 22 years, and we've not had that occur either. So, the risk is very, very minimal. But it is required that we let you know that. Also, as a part of the agreement, you all can appoint a county commissioner to oversee what the LWIB does, what the nonprofit organization does, and also what, where those funds are, are pointed, if you will, across our 62 counties. And we have always had a commissioner, as long as I've been doing this, we've had a commissioner from Fannie County be committed to being a chief elected official board member to watch over what we're doing, not just for Fannie County, but also for the entire local area. We've always appreciated that. I did meet with Linda Lobmeier. I hope I'm saying that correct?
Lobmeier.
Lobmeier, sorry about that. And she, she asked me to clear up some of the acronyms in the agreement. And that was the only point of concern for her. And I did do that and get that sent to her. We are a world of acronyms, as you all know. And we got, we got some of them kind of misconstrued in the agreement. So, we got that all taken care of and sent that as well. With the overview, does anyone have any questions?
Any of the commissioners have questions for Deb with regard to Workforce One? And as you're thinking whether or not you do, Deb, this chief elected officials is one board, and then there's a local workforce board that includes business partners and community colleges and so forth and so on, that do the work for Workforce One. And it's the responsibility of the chief elected officers to appoint those board members. Am I correct on that, just for the public's understanding?
Yes, that is correct. That's probably the, one of the most important roles of the chief elected official board, is to appoint the nonprofit board members according to what our law requires us to have in place. It is a majority business-owned board, but they are appointed by the CEOB. I would say the second responsibility, biggest responsibility for the CEOB is, is the fiscal budgetary process, which the CEOB approves, as well as all the agreements with, with the state and also the federal government.
And, and here in Fannie County, our community college is very involved with you, I believe. And I'm not, I, I don't remember if we have anyone else, but Nicole Hahn is the, a business representative to the Workforce One LWIB board, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That is correct. And Lana DeValle also recently appointed Scott Oost as a replacement for Nicole when she worked for Fannie County Economic Development Council. The board will look at tho, that nomination this coming Friday at our meeting.
Okay. And, and Larry, Larry Jones is sitting here, and he corrected me on that as well. So, I didn't know that was, I mean, I thought that there was that in motion, maybe, but I hadn't heard that officially. So, thank you for that clarification. So, I'm going to look to Larry, I'm going to look to Larry first for comments and questions.
We've had a long, long relationship with Workforce One. I think private businesses have used them immensely. We could ask Commissioner Kreischer about it, because I, his company's always been involved with them over the years. His former company. But I think, you know, it's, it's a good organization. We need to stay involved.
Yeah. And, and there was definitely no intent on my part to have them on the agenda with thoughts of discontinuing. It was just simply to, maybe it was time to just have a direct report from Deb. And, and we're being asked to, for the chair, to sign this multi-year document that was in your package. So, with that, I'll turn to Bob and see if you have any additional comments.
Yeah. I just want to say, I think this is one of the best things that the federal government has ever done. I've had the opportunity to work with Workforce One, not only in Fannie County, but down in Stevens County, and Yugaton, and, and over in Monizuma, and touching as many young people as they touch, and finding employment for people who've been through the high school process, didn't go on to college, and then dropped out, and then putting them back to work. This thing really works. And their involvement of getting county, and they were really instrumental in getting Garden City Community College, 457, and 363 school districts, all working together. And it was fantastic to see this happen. So, I, I am truly in favor of this document.
Dave, comments or questions?
No, I, I was proud to serve on that board. It's a long trip to great bend every now and then. Well, right, Larry?
Yes. I, I think we have a meeting scheduled for Friday, but it's Zoom.
But anyway, I enjoyed the time. And, and so, it's a good organization.
Dwayne?
I tend to echo all the comments. I think we've all served as a representative on that board at one time or another. Totally understand it and value its importance. So, I'd be proud to offer the motion that we authorize the chair to sign the new agreement for Kansas Workforce One.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. And the additional comment I would make is, I've been involved with this organization for a long time, when it was called LWIB years ago. And, and then Deb and I reconnected a couple of years ago. So, it's, Deb is, as she said, has been with the organization for quite some time. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the chair signing the agreement with Workforce One, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. And Deb, I'm sad we never got to see you through this whole process, but you, you sounded like you're doing well.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. You all have a wonderful rest of your day, and always stay in touch. Let us know how we can better serve your communities and, and counties, as well as the ones surrounding you. You guys all do a very good job of working communatively across your area. So, thank you all very much, and have a wonderful day.
And you have a blessed day yourself, Deb. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, I guess, is Stewart, if I'm looking at this correctly, with a black screen. Good thing I have paper copies with me, I guess. So, nothing's going to show up on the screen, I don't believe. Oh, oh, they got it up on that screen. Okay. At least you can see what's, what's up there.
There we go.
Stewart, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. For those at home, my name's Stuart McCreary. I'm the city manager intern for the city of Garden City, here to present on the second half of the AFAT grant. For those at home who aren't familiar with it, this grant is for drug and alcohol abuse prevention in the community. The first half was for applications for $6,000 or less. Those recommendations were made by city staff. The second half is for any applications for more money. And those recommendations were made by the board of Livewell Fannie County. We received two applications for the second half of the AFAT grant, one for $20,000 from Big Brothers Big Sisters for their cornerstone one-to-one mentoring program, and the second from Real Men Real Leaders for $8,000 for their leadership program. Livewell Fannie County reviewed these applications and recommended $13,000 for Big Brothers Big Sisters, and $7,333 for Real Men Real Leaders, for a total of $20,333 for the second portion. And the, the funding is split 90-10, with the county covering 10%. So, the county, should you all approve these grant distributions, would pay $2,333.30, split between Big Brothers Big Sisters and Real Men Real Leaders. I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
My, my only question, Stewart, was just a reconciliation of the numbers, because I saw 13,000 plus 7,333 for 20,333. But then, in our fiscal note, at the bottom of the memo, it said 23,333.
Yeah, that, that is a typo on my part. I apologize.
No, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about 20,333.
Thank you for catching that.
Questions to Stewart or a motion? Does that drain the funds for the year, or do you still have additional funds?
There will still be additional funds that would close out the, the grant process. I would have to review if there's any, any room for emergency requests, but that wouldn't drain the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer the motion to approve the request as presented.
For $20,333, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. So, Dory, as you're working on computers, is Dave, Dave motion, and Bob second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your work on coordinating this.
Absolutely. And like with the first half, I will return at the end of the year with any, any tracking reports that we get from the applicants.
Oh, okay. Sure, sure. Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Stewart. Okay. Next thing on my agenda, it looks like the fairgrounds. And where we, oh, there we are. Yeah. Oh, you're going to bring Rex with you, too?
I am.
I'm the money asker.
Please, please.
All right, Rex.
He wants, he wants to, oh, I'm Stephanie Sebert, Fannie County Fairgrounds.
Just for our online folks.
Rex Harrison, maintenance.
Okay. All right, Stephanie, go ahead.
So, the fairgrounds and building maintenance would partially use this piece of equipment. So, we're requesting approval on a new skid steer loader. We sent out bids to seven companies and rece, or bid letters, invitations to bid. We received three of them back. Those would be from American Implement, Can Equipped, and Berry Tractor. So, our recommendation is from Can Equipped. It is the New Holland L328. Purchase price would be $58,500. We are choosing this one, if approved by you guys, due to meeting and exceeding the majority of the specs that we sent out to these companies. It also has a bunch of additional safety features that the other pieces of equipment did not include.
Mr. Chairman, so there, there is, we're not going to have a fix probably for your monitors today. But if there's something specific that you'd like to put up on the big screen, let us know, and we'll get that up there for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. So, as, as you can see from Stephanie's report, and I've always used the term since I've been on this commission of best bid, you know, what's our best bid? And we hope that most of the time, it's low bid. But in this case, it is, what's being recommended to us is not necessarily low bid. So, I will turn to each of you for questions and comments. And Dwayne's our mechanical and machinery expert, so he'll probably have the most. But I'm going to start with Dave.
I agree with the best bid concept, but you folks are recommending to us a high bid. Tell us why it's the best bid.
More safety features.
I'm sorry?
More safety features. And it met all the specs.
Okay. It exceeds the specifications, as I reviewed things. But do we hold the others in harm's way because they didn't bid something that wasn't spec'd?
Well, there's, there's a lot of options on one of them, but they all cost extra. And that brought the, the price up.
Yeah. So, White Star Machinery gave us a bid on the S66 T4 Bobcat. Quite a few of the specs that we requested are considered optional. So, delivery for that piece of equipment, he couldn't give us a, a great estimated delivery. It depends on if they can find that model with those specs already on it. If they can, it'd be a 60-day delivery. If not, he didn't even have an estimated delivery date.
One of the things I noticed was the delivery on one of those, at least, was like months down the road.
American Implement, so they actually took the lowest bid, the Bobcat. American Implement, so they actually took the lowest bid, the Bobcat. He didn't include the dual self-leveling that we requested, so when I called and visited him with him about it, it actually did not make it the lowest bid anymore. American Implement, their delivery date was, the soonest would be October. So this piece of equipment would actually be used by building maintenance for snow removal on all the county buildings. So our concern was if that was the earliest date, how much more snow would we have this year? What would be the earliest snow next year? And how would we get these?
My questions were not to embarrass you, but rather to illustrate to the listening audience why we consider best bid, and you've done a nice job, so thank you.
Duane, I'll turn to you.
I think the easiest way is to pull up screen, oh, you got it, number 175. I was looking through that one, and I guess Dave pretty much covered it, you know, I mean, the two machines look pretty identical. How much, what's the safety feature special?
So additional that Can Equipped had on theirs, there's an inside boom lock that the operator can put into effect while inside the cabbie, doesn't have to be outside, so if there's an issue while dumping, he can lock the boom, and it would be safe for him to get out. They include a backup camera, a visibility panel on the roof. The front door extends lower down, so they can see almost straight down versus having to look over a threshold. There's a seat belt that does not have to have the lap bar to activate the operation of that equipment, so it would actually accommodate larger operators. And I believe in the past, we had some staff down there that could not operate the skid steer due to being a larger person. So this would allow a bigger operator. And let's see, what else?
You want as many safety features as you can get with multiple operators, because they don't all operate the same.
Are you selling the old Bobcat, or whatever, better words, outright, or using it somewhere else, or what's the plan?
We continue to use it as long as we can. It's almost at the end of its expected life. The one for snow removal is sitting down there in the yard, it's not in operation anymore.
Salvage value? Is there any salvage value or anything?
I'd have to talk to the Roden Bridge on it.
Any other questions, Duane?
Larry? Question, is, I'm trying to read those. Is this a track or wheel?
Wheel.
Wheel? Okay. I know, you know, I've seen these in operation a lot in snow removal, and the broom option seems to be the best. Is that what you've got?
We'll look at that also.
Anything else?
No, I, that's one they can get and run, that's, you know, that's the main thing anymore, is getting equipment.
Bob?
No questions.
The only comment I'll make is, if you notice in their cover page, they've noted that the reason this came to us is because anything above 30,000 needs to have commission approval, and then they also put in their fiscal, in the fiscal note category, where the funds are coming from, so I hope you've noted that as well, no matter what bid you might expect, or accept, because some of the reports that we've had before from staff have not indicated those two things. Why is it in our room versus them making the decision, and secondly, where are the funds coming from? So I've asked them to do that in future presentations, and I thank you for doing that, in this case, Rex and Stephanie. So with that, what is the Board's desire with regard to the skid steer for multiple uses?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Our recommendation is Can Equipped, is that correct? At $58,500, and deeming that as the best bid, I'll offer a motion to accept it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And seconded by Larry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
May have that unit in stock, ready to be delivered essentially?
Should be here in May, well, April, September, we should see it, we should be able to have it.
All right, hurry it right along, because it may snow yet this year.
Like tonight, maybe, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering whether, before we get into a discussion with the Sheriff and so forth, if we should take a little bit of a break and check in and see about that resolution in Topeka. So let's break for 15 minutes. If the resolution happens a little sooner than that, we're going to come back and try to join that resolution in Topeka, but we'll reconvene as a Board, for sure, at 11:05, or, excuse me, 10:05. Should have closed the doors, we had one Commissioner escape.
He's on the phone.
Oh. Well, and supposedly, the House has not gavelled in yet, and the resolution for Russ is third on the agenda.
Okay.
A minute. Who's in charge up there? It's after 10 o'clock, and someone hasn't gavelled in?
You would think it was a legislative process or something, so.
Must be a power statement.
Oh, and here, I got another, I got a text from Russ, or from Stephen. Stephen Johnson says Russ's family is seated. I think we'll start soon. I'll text you when we start the session, so. And you're getting yours from Bill, Dory?
Sorry, he did say there were two items of personal privilege ahead of that item, so.
So what we're going to do with your permission, Sheriff, is we're going to start your discussion. We may need to interrupt. So, what we're going to do with your permission, Sheriff, is we're going to start your discussion. We may need to interrupt for a minute or two because we'd really like to hear this resolution about Russ Jennings, and I think you understand that very well, so. So with that, we have on our agenda a discussion with our sheriff with regard to inmate medical services for the jail. And I'll let you go ahead, Sheriff, and start the discussion.
Hey, Sheriff Mike Warren, Fannie County. As you know, we've always used the county health department, the nursing over there for our inmates for medical needs. And recently, because of the, as we all know, shorthandedness of the health department, we had an employee there that was eight hours a day, Monday through Friday. Unfortunately, health department needs, she had to be pulled back. It is hard to get the health department because of their requirements and then to meet our requirements. So we're asking, we've been in contact with, it's called advanced correctional healthcare. And they provide nursing and I think they have their own doctor on staff. But they're providing, they'll do it eight hours, Monday through Friday. Obviously, that's going to cost us a little more than the health department, but I think it's good for us because of the liability issues we have in that jail. That the county health department has other goals, and I don't believe the jail is probably one of their goals. I know they have a doctor that oversees them. I don't know if their doctor is aware that, or I shouldn't say aware, but is really wanting to oversee the jail inmate staff as well. So therefore, we've contacted this company. We've tried to contact, I believe, I brought my expert staff with me, by the way. So I believe Jeff Orbaugh, who's Assistant Jail Administrator, has tried to contact six other health companies, and this is the only one we've gotten any response from. This same company is used by Ford County Sheriff's Office. It's Ellis County, Celine County, Thomas County. I believe they have thirty-two counties in the state of Kansas. So I believe in, I've talked to Sheriff Carr from Ford County. He's a big believer in this company. I just had conversation with him again last night, and he said they're very good to work with. Obviously, it takes some liability, obviously. We'll never get rid of liability from the jail, but as a jail standpoint, inmate medical is probably the number one that causes sheriffs to get sued. And so I'm all for letting somebody else take a little bit of that liability, as you all know what that's like. Because obviously, we're in this together, because if it happens to me, obviously, you're the stakeholders in a lot of this, so. That's what we're asking, and for medical alone, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Right now, we're, like I said, we're using the county health department. I think we've cut it down to they're only able to come over one or two hours a day. So we're setting at ninety-two inmates. I think Ford County told me they're contracted at a hundred and ten inmates. This contract would be for a hundred inmates. Ford County pays three hundred and thirty thousand a year for this same company. I don't know what all they have. There is a mental health part of this that we haven't added into the hundred and eighty. That would be another, I believe it was thirty... Thirty-six thousand, seven sixty-eight fifty, if we went that way. We are dealing, as you all know, a lot more mental health issues, especially in the jail. So that's where we're at. I guess we could continue to use the health department. I just don't believe that that's going to be enough medical attention, and I'm afraid there's too much of a liability issue. And I know my jail staff would agree with that. The other alternative is, is I think we've looked into trying to hire our own nurse, which we would have to have a doctor to oversee that, just like the health department does, and that's pretty hard to find, a doctor that wants that liability. So this company, this is our recommendation to hire this company, which for medical would be a hundred and eighty thousand. We would also like to add the mental health part if we could. I haven't really discussed the mental health as in-depth with the county administrator. But I believe the ARPA funds is what we looked at, that they say are able to use this now, and then we, obviously, would try to get that in our budget for the next year.
Two questions I have, and then I'll open it up to the other commissioners. One is on the mental health. Do we not now, or could we not in the future, use Compass?
We do now.
We have them as a partner for mental health services?
We do now. I believe, and I could probably get one of my jail staff here who deals with that more than I do directly. He's had some concerns with the Compass. Just, it's hard to get people to come up to that jail. And I don't like to go to the jail either, but obviously I have to. But it's hard to get, you know, medical care into the jail. I don't know. Kyle, you've had a lot of contact with that, and he could probably explain some of his issues he's had with the Compass. Would you like?
Hello, Kyle Lawson. So with Compass, the only time they'll come up to the jail is when it's for an evaluation for Larned, if it's got to the point where we cannot handle that inmate anymore. They'll come up and do an evaluation on whether or not that individual needs to be with us or get put into Larned. Even then, that's not a guarantee that they're going to get the help they need. Larned has to prove it. There's different hoops that have to be jumped through. We set them up. We have a good relationship with Compass, but the majority of what they do is more on the medication side. They do have an intern that comes up. I don't know if there's one set up right now that was coming up once a week for a little bit of a therapeutic. But they can't help our individuals that have serious mental needs. The, right now, getting somebody in for a medical review for medications is about a month and a half to two months out for an appointment. That does not help their situation or our situations at all, dealing with them and getting them the proper help that they need. So with this, it's a five-hour coverage, Monday through Friday. Somebody that's there can check on them every day, ask how they're doing, see how they're doing, and they would communicate with Compass as well. We've talked to them a little bit, and they would communicate with Compass one-on-one, and they can better... Better see that the needs of the inmates are than what our staff can. Obviously, we're not trained in the mental health field. All ours is just learning on the job, and so.
I can't remember. When you're talking about the training, I can't remember in that document that they provided, there was some training for mental health, if I'm not mistaken, but was that for the mental health of the sheriff's officer? Or, no, I mean, seriously, I'm being serious about this because I was thinking that there was a piece where they were doing some training, and I didn't know if that was part of the hundred and eighty thousand, or if that was a part of the mental health services. But I thought it included, you know, helping officers understand and be better trained in the mental health services, but maybe even for help with them if they, you know, had some issues that needed to be resolved.
I believe that's right, and this hundred and eighty thousand includes some mental health training, and that's for the law enforcement officers. And we have sent some officers, and I think they kind of do a little bit of this same thing, because that is an issue in law enforcement. Very bad issue, and it's to train them to kind of notice that your partner, maybe going through something and diagnosed, not really diagnosed, but being able to observe that and maybe get them some help or talk to them. That's kind of what this is. So this really isn't for the inmates.
Okay. I saw that reference, but I couldn't remember without scrolling through the whole thing again, so. Larry, I'm going to turn to the right this time and see if you have questions or comments.
I guess, you know, my two questions would be, you've exhausted the ability to hire a full-time nurse through the county health department and let them oversee her, or is that, or him?
Well, we had that, and like I said, I know they're shorthanded, and they called her back and needed her service. I'm sure that administrator can...
You're down to one RN at the health department?
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
So we're lucky we're getting one or two hours a day.
But Larry, and Robert or the sheriff can correct me if I'm incorrect, but they also have to have a medical director supervisor. And our current medical director has said he would prefer not to do that. Is my understanding, am I correct on that?
That's, yes, that's the report that I received as well.
So they would have to find a separate medical director to supervise, even if they were able to hire their own?
And correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong on this, but I believe you kind of went through that process originally to, as you were going through potentially hiring that, and that you...
We did find one doctor that was willing to oversee it. But you know, you just, I guess at that, you don't know, he's already retired, and how long is he going to want to do that? And if he, two years from now, decided he didn't want to do it anymore, there's just not a lot of doctors out there that want to. This company, they provide their own.
My second question would be, how about JDC? I know they worked through you on some things. How does Beth do for coverage of her clients down there?
And she uses, I believe, the health department as well.
That's correct. I checked with Beth on that. They have different guidelines than what is, what they go through. The other question for Mike on the agreement is, would the, you have an annual cost on this. Is that something that could be prorated for the remainder of this year and then?
Yes, and I believe so, because I've talked to them about that, and they have this monthly price down here at like fifteen thousand a month. So just whenever the contract starts, and like they said, they could prorate it out, and if we wanted to pay the hundred and eighty thousand at the beginning of every year, we could obviously do that, too, and then just prorate the rest of this year out. You know, one of the things, the other options we have, and I didn't throw that out there, is us, I mean us as the sheriff's office, transporting inmates to the doctors, to the ER. That obviously, one, we have to have an officer available. We're just like everybody else. We're a little shorthanded, so we use those that are off-duty. So now we have to pay them a transport fee to do that, and anytime you remove an inmate from the jail, there's obviously some concern. There's a liability. What's that inmate going to do? And if they tried to escape, we, obviously, we have officers that could be hurt, the inmates could be hurt, doctors, nurses that could be hurt. So we like to keep them in a secured facility, obviously, and have nurse staff up there. I do agree, too, with this company, that they've made comments to me that correctional health is different than anybody else's. So I know our nurses at the county health department, I think, do a great job. They have many programs up there. They offer our community, which are awesome. I've used them. I'm sure a lot of you have. But I don't know that they're really trained in correctional health either, and I just certainly wouldn't want them to come up there and get themselves in a situation as well. So that's kind of where we're at. We're, as Sheriff Carr told me, we're maintaining health. We're not trying to cure them, so.
Bob?
Yeah, I guess I'm all for trying to fix something from within the community instead of going out. And, you know, if we look at the dollars we were spending in previous years, obviously, it's significantly less than a hundred and eighty thousand. Question number one, have you approached Centura at all about doing that service on a contract basis, St. Catherine? One of their doctors and...
We have not contacted them.
You know, to me, you know, they're trying to expand out here. They just bought the Dodge City Hospital, and they're expanding. They purchased all of the local doctors' practices, and it seems to me that this would be at least a natural question. If they could provide a physician's assistant, they have all the doctors to look over their shoulders and all of those kind of things. It would seem to me that that would be an alternative, and even if it was the same amount of money, at least that money gets to stay in Fannie County. So that would kind of be question one, and I'm sorry?
Just finish the sentence, but we've got the Topeka thing.
Okay, that's all.
And we'll come right back to Bob here in just a minute.
My colleagues, I'm honored to rise here today to offer a resolution and recognition of our deceased colleague, Representative Jay Russell Jennings, known to us as Russ Jennings. Joining me this morning is Russ's wife, Judy. His son, Joseph. His son, Jim Jennings. His daughter, Julie Jennings. His other daughter, Jody Worth. Jody's husband, Leighton. And their sons, Wyatt Worth and Carter Worth. Also joining us this morning are three very dear friends to Russ. Senator John Dahl, Representative Bill Clifford, who is the successor to Russ's District 122 seat, and former Representative Melissa Rooker. I want to thank Melissa for supplying the flag that flew over the Capitol in honor of Representative Jennings. And I want to thank her husband for building the most beautiful shadow box that will be presented to Mrs. Jennings this morning. Russ had a long and distinguished career, serving in many varied positions. Russ grew up and graduated high school in Buffalo, New York. After graduation, he moved to Tulsa, Oklahoma, to attend aircraft mechanic school. After graduating from the Tulsa School, he took a job in Johnson City, Kansas, as an aircraft mechanic and pilot. In Johnson City, he also volunteered with the Johnson City Police Department and the Fire Department. He then attended the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Academy in Hudson, and was hired by the Kearney County Sheriff as a Kearney County Deputy Sheriff, a position in which he served for three years. He was then appointed under Sheriff of Kearney County and served in that position for four years. Needless to say, Russ had a very distinguished career in law enforcement and was highly respected by his community he served. Russ was so highly respected within his community, he ended his law enforcement career by being nominated and appointed as Kearney County District Magistrate Judge and served as such for thirteen years. Again, Russ distinguished himself as a judge, not only within the Twenty-Fifth Judicial District, but also across the state. Russ was frequently assigned by the Supreme Court into various metropolitan district courts to assist them in cleaning up their dockets and handling their overload cases. Russ earned his reputation of being very fair, efficient, and a knowledgeable judge. Placing his judicial career behind him, Russ shifted gears and entered a field that would hold his passion to the end. Juvenile justice. Russ was hired by the Board of Fannie County Commissioners to become the new Director of the Southwest Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Center, a facility which had not yet been built. Russ was dutiful in overseeing the construction of the very complex building, essentially a large jail for juveniles. It was his baby. Speaking of babies, I wanna recognize one. One weekend, I went to visit with Russ at the detention center, which was under construction, it was on a Saturday afternoon. We visited in the front yard, which was essentially a dirt and mud at that time. Judy and Jody were with him, playing in the yard, when I went to leave, I reached in my pocket of my jeans and, how can I say this discreetly, something wiggled in my pocket. I can tell you that it both shocked me and scared me, then I turned to hear Julie laughing, she had slipped a frog into my pocket. Like father, like daughter. After serving as Director of the Southwest Kansas Juvenile Detention Center for thirteen years, and expanding his interest in juvenile justice, Russ was called to Topeka to serve as Commissioner of Juvenile Justice by Governor Kathleen Sebelius, and he appointed him to her cabinet, she appointed him to her cabinet. He served four years under two governors, as Commissioner, Russ oversaw all the juvenile justice systems, as well as all the state juvenile correction facilities. Having served in many positions involving juveniles in trouble, Russ developed a passion for improvement of the juvenile justice system, and he gained, he gained a lot of inside experience in his jobs over the years, which put him in a position to render improvement to the juvenile justice system. In 2012, he ran for and won the office of State Representative for District 122. He was in his fifth term when he passed away on October 27th, 2021. He had become well-known for his work in corrections and juvenile justice, and he had been the Chair of the Corrections and Juvenile Justice Committee for five sessions before he passed. While he served as a State Representative, Russ was retained as a Contract Consultant for Performance-Based Standards of Braintree, Massachusetts. When not in session, he traveled throughout the country to meet with his assigned juvenile detention centers to assure that they were implementing the correctly, or implementing and correctly using performance-based standards in the operation of their detention centers. Not long before he died, several of his detention centers won national awards. He hoped that his health would last long enough for him to attend the award ceremony. I'm not sure of that answer. He made it. That was so important to him. I could go on to name all of the committees, the boards, the associations upon which he served over the years, but that would take another half an hour to read. I do want to mention that he served on the Lake and Council, City Councils from 1997 to 2005. Over his adult life, Representative Russ Jennings was a very busy man, deeply invested in public service. In every job he held, either was, he either was enforcing the law, overseeing children involved with the law, or making laws. However, I can tell you one thing about he was most passionate, the love of his family. As a close personal friend, I can, I can tell you that his wife, Judy, was the light of his life. She put happiness in his heart and a smile on his face. He loved each and every one of his children to the stars and back, even the one who put a frog in my pocket. Also regarding his children, I cannot say to you with adequate words how proud of each of you he was. He's so proud of you, each of you, for what you have become. Joe, a successful investment executive for Core One Bank, and with whom he lived when he was in Topeka. Jim, a successful cattle producer and an agricultural entrepreneur. Julie, a successful nurse practitioner for cardio, cardiothoracic surgery and vascular surgery. And Jody, a successful dentist, as is her husband, Leighton. And there are those two grandsons. Wyatt and Carter Worth, young fellows, your grandfather loved you with all his heart. He could not stop bragging about you, and he never missed an opportunity to come to Hays to see you, have you visiting Leighton, or have you come to visit he and Judy at their house on Lake Penopolis. My colleagues, I can tell you for certain that Representative Jennings respected you without regard to which side of the aisle upon which you sit, or your personal political persuasions. He may not have agreed with you, but he respected you and showed you respect. To the few on this floor who never met him, he would have respected you too. His respect for you grew out of the respect for this institution. Representative respected this institution. He truly was a man for all ages, I hope you will remember him that way. At this time, I would like to present to Judy the shadow box. Mr. Speaker, at this time, I move House Resolution 6026 favorable for passage.
You've heard the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies for, uh, making that work for us, and, uh, oh my.
Tough act to follow.
I will tell one quick Russ story. He almost didn't survive one campaign because I was backing out of my driveway with my pickup, and, uh, then, when I'm just about on the street, there's Russ right behind my pickup, and, so we joked about that for a long time, how he survived, survived the almost hit, uh, that I inflicted on him, so. Uh, great guy, great guy. And, uh, we're gonna come back to Bob, and the questions to the sheriff about Centura and local health coverage and local, and dollars staying locally, and, uh, so Bob with that, I'll let you jump in again.
Yeah, I, I think that at least they would be a viable alternative, and, and I guess I'm not ready to give up on the fact that we have a health department, and we have a sheriff's department, and both of them are Fannie County, and that surely there ought to be some way that we can work it out. You know, the worst condition is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If we need to be doing something else in terms of dollars to hire someone, or if the sheriff's department has to go outside and hire a physician's assistant, and we have to bribe that doctor with more dollars to where they at least become an overview, I'm not willing to give up on what we've been doing, so, those are my thoughts.
Dwayne, I'll turn to you.
Couple of questions, I guess, first off, this is a three-year contract, or is it a year-to-year?
Year-to-year, year-to-year.
Okay, I saw something in here, or?
I believe that.
Follow-up, you mentioned that this company seems to work well with very sheriff departments across the street, there's quite a few of them that use this company, is that correct?
Yes.
Any guesstimates why Dodge City has such a sweet deal over what we were offered?
Well, they, they actually pay a little more than we do.
They pay more.
No, hu, they pay three hundred and thirty thousand. Now, I don't know what all their contract, I know, uh, it, they did have one-time mental health or tried to with this company, and they've, they've in turn have contracted with Compass. I don't know what their compass in Ford County is compared to ours here, uh, that's something, I mean, we could obviously look at. I, I would just like to point out that this company comes in, and, and as far as keeping dollar, I, I'm all for, if we can keep dollars local, I agree with that. Uh, they will hire a nurse that is from our community, that's their intention, is to hire, uh, somebody that lives here, works here, uh, so keeping it here. I don't know, Centura, we, we do have some, uh, we do work with them, try to, um, I know they come in from out of state here too, and I know they hire a lot of doctors that, in their ER, that do not live in this community. So, I know this company, I don't know, you know, as far as their doctor, where their doctor would be from, but the nurse would be from here, that, that's their, their goal. And they, obviously, and they've talked, just talking to them, they want us to be a part of that hiring process of the nurse that they will employ. Am I missing anything on that, Jeff? Okay.
Uh, first off, I apologize to TV Land that my mic was off, it's back on now.
Okay.
I, I guess I take the opposite view, I kinda understand how tough the health department is going through right now, and the people just aren't there. And so, I, I guess I would be in favor, I don't know if I am in favor of the mental health portion of it at this point in time, but, uh.
I, I definitely, and what, and, and, you know, they, they don't stress enough, and I, I know they're a company selling us, but just talking, like I said, to other sheriffs, I've talked to Sheriff Carr, I've talked to, uh, Sheriff Jaeger out of Potawatomi County, who uses them, obviously, his facility's nowhere near as big as ours, but he, they both say that, just what this company says, they're in correctional health, and that's, that's just not what the health department's in, and that's, like I said, it's, when you're dealing with inmates, and, and the, all these behind me that, that come from the sheriff's office that's worked in that jail, you deal with a different mentality of people. And I think that's what you need, is somebody that understands what's going on, and, and maybe going through the mind of somebody that's incarcerated. And I'm not, would never put the health department down, 'cause like I said, I, 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 I applaud what they do, and I use them, and I know they're, they're there for our community, and, and I'm grateful for that. It's just that getting one of them to come over and, and trying to, us to train that nurse, uh, in the mentality or what you're dealing with in somebody that's incarcerated can take us a little while, where this company, their policies and their trainings, they, hopefully, they, their nurse already comes with some of that in, idea, plus with our staff helping.
I have a couple of quick questions, Mike. You said you've kinda tried every place in the, in the area to get somebody to consider coming forth. How about the, the new, new to us, uh, service that is providing our county health, or, I'm sorry, providing our county employees' health services? And I can't think of their.
GrowWell?
GrowWell, is GrowWell, they're, they're not being interested in that either.
I don't believe that's something, again, correctional health, that, that I have had a, just a brief conversation with one of them there, um, Jamie, uh, that's come and talked to a lot of us. As she kinda looked at me, she said, "Good luck." So, I take it that they weren't really interested in that, so.
And my real technical question, I'm gonna give you a hypothetical in order to ask it. The Garden City Police Officer makes an municipal arrest and puts them in your jail, and they suddenly need medical care. Does that bill go to the city, or is that county?
Well, I, I believe right now, and then the way we had it before with our, with our health department nurse, uh, we, we cover that now, we have to take them and, and, and ER, or they have to get admitted to the hospital or doctor visit, I, and these guys over here, I know Kyle takes care of a lot of that billing, we do bill the city for that, I believe, but if, if it's. Pay for it upfront, then we bill them, but I believe that in, in that situation where it's in-house, we've never billed the city for that, is that correct? We've never done that.
Well, I was just, if we approve the hundred and eighty thousand for this contract, wanna kinda keep that in the back of our mind for the next time we negotiate with the city over use of the jail, fair enough?
Yes, I understand that, and I, and I would, and from talking to Sheriff Carr, and then we were talking, and talking about emergency room or doctor visits, that's one of the questions I asked him, having this company, has he seen a decrease in, in the need of taking inmates to the doctor or to the emergency room, and he said, "Yes, they have seen that." And I don't have a number from, from him as to what kinda decrease or the money savings, obviously, even if you have a nurse up there, that there's obviously gonna be times when, their doctor or the nurse may say, "We need to take this person to the emergency room," or "We need to get a, a doctor to look at them."
Thank you.
My, my questions are, uh, Mike, it, it appears to me that, uh, Dwayne's comment was correct, that it's a three-year contract, because Section 4.1 says a term will begin in twenty-two and end in twenty-three, or twenty-five, and can be renewed for successive three-year periods, so, uh, it appears that it's three-year contracts. And then, secondly, um, well, I, I guess I had three things, secondly though, uh, how long has, uh, Ford County been with this company?
Sheriff Carr told me they started them in 2016.
So, four, five years?
Yeah.
Six years, yeah.
Somewhere in that contract, I thought I read where, where, if their funds weren't there, that it was, it would end that year, that.
Well, that could be, but I just saw where it says contract dates are, you know, and it's got three years, successive three years, so there, I could have missed something else in the fine print, obviously. And then the, the other thing, oh, and I just, I just, uh, went through, I got the wrong page now, and I don't know where I am, but there was, at toward the end of this information that we have, there was something called EMR services not included, and it was thirty-six thousand dollars or something. I didn't quite understand what, what that was.
That, that's.
It says it's not included, so it's not in the eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand.
I believe that would be that, uh, mental health portion, that, 'cause that, that's.
That was, you know, it was, and maybe that's it, I was thinking there were two different things, I was thinking there was mental health and then something about EMR. Does anybody else have any insight to that? Oh, yeah, it was software.
Software, okay, yeah, yes.
'Cause it said nineteen thousand to get set up, and annual some.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's software.
But, but is that something, that's not something we have to have?
That's not, we talked to them about that, I, and I had Robert Hahn, our IT, was in there when we met with them, and they said, "It's not a requirement," they said, "We, we have our own, uh, system in which I think that, that we can allow them access to a portion of it," and they said they deal with a lot of sheriff's office where they still do a lot of paper. And so, that wasn't a requirement, it just makes their life easier, but it's not a requirement.
Okay, 'cause I didn't, you know, if, if it was the will of this board, a hundred and eighty thousand, but then they come back, say, "Yeah, but you have another thirty-six, you know, to do this," and then thirty-six for mental health, and, I mean, just trying to understand the full financial impact.
And they, and they reevaluate, so every quarter they sit down and have a meeting, and Sheriff Carr told me, he said, "They're very good at that and very helpful." Probably one of the things that, that would ever be reevaluated for us is if our numbers, 'cause they're basing it off of a hundred inmates right now, I know Ford County's based off of a hundred and ten. We have just recently opened the jail back from COVID, I look for our numbers to rise, I think, uh, pre-COVID, we were setting at, uh, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, so I would, I would see that ours was probably going to change as.
And then lastly, I I like the the thought that Bob professed as far as, and please don't misunderstand. Yes, the emergency room people come from out of state for our hospital and so forth and so on, so I I understand both sides of that that discussion. However, the thing where that I do agree with Bob is that maybe they should be consulted first before a decision is made to see whether or not they have someone in the system that is correctional health trained and a medical director that could supervise, to see whether that even is an option of working with our local even even though they're based out of Denver with our local hospital versus this company that you have, so I I would not I would not discount the fact that maybe we need to do a little bit more research before we come to a conclusion would be where I am, but with that being said, what is the desire of this of this board?
I guess one more question, if Dodge has been with them five or six years and their rate is three hundred and thirty thousand and ours is going to be a hundred and eighty and theirs is a hundred and ten people and ours is a hundred and you open yours up, I I think we need to know the rest of the story. Mr. Chairman, I move we table this until the next meeting.
There's a motion to table this for further discussion at another meeting, and is there a second to that motion?
Seconded, but.
Moved and seconded to table.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Mike, is there a, is they give you a time limit on this contract they offered you or was there?
I believe it was sixty days.
Sixty days?
Which I, you know, I'm willing to take that risk, actually, but other discussion, though, on the motion to table.
What are we gonna do while we're waiting for this to?
Well, I think what we basically asked, Mike, is find out from Dodge City why that price is so different, you know, did it escalate every year? Secondly, maybe check with Centura to see if if there's options, you know, with our local hospital that or and and then the other, the third one I would throw in there is, what's that price going to go to after tomorrow? Well, it'd be two days from now, I guess, but I don't, you know, it just seems to me like we're not quite ready to make the the decision, plus we don't know if there's fifteen thousand a month in our, somewhere in the budget, you know, to be able to cover that even if they prorated it for this year, so. I I, to me, there's some unanswered questions, that's why I'm willing to table it for two weeks. But any, Dwayne, I haven't heard from you, I guess.
Well, I'm all in favor of using the ARPA funds and I'm kind of skeptical. I think it's worth going for.
And and I would just simply add, and this isn't to change your your opinion, but we are going to have a discussion about ARPA funds on April fourth as well. Above and beyond this this discussion. Any other questions or comments? The motion is to table this for two weeks and let Sheriff dig out some additional information with the idea that ARPA funds might be a a source of financing. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. And all opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay. Motion passes, and so in two weeks we'll bring that back, if you would do some research and quiz them on how much this is going to increase in two days.
Sheriff Mike, if you would like, I could make a contact with Centura and at least introduce the topic and see if we could get a meeting set up.
If if that's what you want, I mean, we could do that or.
However you want to handle it.
Just just keep Bob.
Have a lot of contacts over there. But just keep Bob in the loop if you.
Sure.
Heard his willingness to be involved if you need it.
And that's, if you know someone there, that's fine, that's, I don't know anybody there that.
Yes, Bob, would you please do that for us?
Yeah.
That's the jail administrator there, so.
And see if we can set something up and at least get a concept of what's going on. All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, Kelly, you've got a proposal to make to us.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. And this morning I'm asking for consideration of a temporary pilot program implementing paid time off, also known as PTO in place of our separate sick and vacation banks with Vinnie County EMS. The pilot program will undergo continuous evaluation with the potential to move the remaining county offices to PTO. Approving this pilot would allow the EMS staff to temporarily abide by a policy outside of the scope of the current paid leave policy that we have in place. A little background on our leave, Vinnie County currently offers sick and vacation in two separate banks to eligible full-time and eligible part-time employees. Sick leave is earned at eight hours per month regardless of longevity, vacation accrues, excuse me, increases by two hours every five years to a max of sixteen hours per month. The annual maximums are four hundred and eighty for sick, a hundred ninety-two for vacation, anything over those at the end of the year are forfeited by the employee. Although each current leave bank is to be used and designated separately, Vinnie County's past practices have allowed the two banks to be used interchangeably at the discretion of the director, supervisor, or the employee. Vinnie County departments that provide service to the community twenty-four hours, seven days a week would benefit from this because the PTO would be set based off a multiplier calculated off of scheduled hours worked. The scheduled hours would range from twelve hours to forty-eight for the most part, infrequently there are a few weeks where EMS staff would be scheduled up to sixty-five hours in a week. The alternatives to support the PTO pilot as it's presented to you today from April one through the end of two thousand twenty-two deny the PTO pilot program and any further evaluation of potentially moving to from the separate leave banks that we currently offer or any other recommendation by the board. My recommendation is to approve the PTO program, knowing that the program will undergo constant review and a full, complete proposed policy will be brought back to you on the new recommendation for countywide implementation or to inform the board of another direction. No additional financial impact with this pilot program, and at this time there would be no permanent policy change, only in the future if we moved.
Okay, you've heard Kelly's proposal to do a temporary PTO program for the EMS department, and I'm going to look to Dave first, questions or comments?
I'll make a comment, there are a number of businesses and industries now that have moved away from the traditional one day of vacation a month and one day of sick leave and so on, and gone to much like you're describing here, a general leave. I've talked to a couple in the medical field where that is their practice in in their medical office, and they say that it works better than the old, so don't have to argue was it a vacation day or a sick leave day, it was a personal leave day. So my leaning, Mr. Chairman, at this point is support this on a trial basis.
I guess I support it as well, I'm just curious why EMS over the countywide.
Well, EMS has the the longest shifts scheduled, and so they're going to benefit from a a little bit more from the multiplier. Each payroll, it would be based off of their scheduled hours versus just a set amount for all employees, so when they take a week off, maybe because of an FMLA event or whatnot, they're having to use forty-eight hours of leave, but they're still earning what the rest of us are and we only have to take forty, so and it's not, it's not to make the multiplier to where it's equal equal, you know, to take off and earn, however, it just gives them a little bit more, which could help in those types of events.
Anything else? Larry?
No, it sounds like you've looked into this pretty thoroughly. I think we can, anything that we can do to retain employees, we need to look at.
Yeah, I, personal time off is certainly the standard in business now, and it it really something we need to look at seriously. Under the formula you have right now, basically, an employee gets a hundred and ninety-two hours a year, combination between the two.
Vacation, they, a hundred ninety-two vacation right now, is that what you're?
Well, no, they get twelve hours or twelve days of vacation and twelve days of sick leave right now.
Depends on how many years.
Well, that's that's the rookies, that's the people starting, and then they get more than that if they've been there longer. And so that's twenty-four days and eight hours is a hundred and ninety-two. Is that what you're proposing for the personal time off, or are you proposing more hours for personal time off?
For longevity, it would be a little bit more.
Well, but we're just taking that first five years.
First one, for the EMS stuff, it would be the one ninety-two.
Okay.
All other staff up there, we've got two that are on a forty-eight hour work week, so they would be at the one eighty-four.
Okay.
Versus the one ninety-two.
Well, I think as long as we're apples and apples, I think it's it's awesome, because traditionally, in business, we have employees, when you were vacation and sick leave, you had half of your employees that managed every year to take absolutely every sick day that they had, and we had others that never did.
Right.
So I I think this is an absolute great test, and I'm hoping it's successful and can possibly be applied across the board, because I think it would be great.
The other thing that we currently do not have is a shared leave policy, we also, which is also a donated leave policy. With this PTO policy for EMF EMS, it would also create a critical leave bank with a maximum up to seven hundred and twenty hours versus the four hundred and eighty. So once you reach your maximum in your PTO bank, the money is then moved to that critical bank for critical illness such as an FMLA event.
I I guess, you know, that is a completely new and different topic, and I I think really needs to have some research, and and at the same time in research, I think it would be great to look at the ability, when you start getting, well, I think you can accrue four hundred and eighty hours and a hundred and ninety-two hours of what you can accrue and take into the next year. When you take that amount of money into the next year, and since you're on a cash basis accounting, all of a sudden you're setting a future liability into the next budget year that if an employee, employees get a raise, all of a sudden we're eventually going to pay those benefits at a higher salary. And we don't really have a vehicle that says, oh, wait a minute, all of a sudden we have this larger payroll next year because because someone claimed it. I think we also ought to look at the ability, if they have four hundred and eighty hours and they would like to have some additional money instead of carrying them over, that they would have the right to buy those hours back. And so I think that would be one other policy when you're looking at all of these things that could be done to in employee policies, that that would at least be another question.
That is in my notes as well as, you know, just some additional, just personal days that don't get charged to PTO, some companies will do, you know, two, three, or five additional personal days that don't go against PTO. Also taking the bereavement out of charging it to employees' banks, looking at an injury leave policy. Right now, the current, the current policy reads the employees use their sick or vacation for injured leave the first seven days that aren't covered by work comp, so you could look at that as well, so I have all those in in here for research over the next several months.
And that way, I think it would be awesome if we could kind of see the whole revision at one time, but I think this test program and personal time off is awesome. And I would move that we approve this personal time off experiment for the MS.
There's a motion to approve the temporary PTO as presented.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dwayne, and and my only comment is that, yes, PTO has become a standard, it seems, in banking your PTO and donating your PTO and all those different things to and the donation part of it, I think, is is a very meaningful thing to help those in need within the organization, so I I know your research and all of that.
Yep.
Dave, something?
Before we vote on this, I'm going to make a a statement. There's a difference between management and administration. We're supposed to be administrators. There's our manager over there, and and so I'll vote for this, but to me, the the decision ought to be at, not at the county commission level, but at our our appointed director of non-elected personnel.
And I would agree with that wholeheartedly, unfortunately, here in the county, the board has been, at this particular point, charged with approving employee policies, but I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. And I think that, plus the purchasing policies, some of those things, we need to distinguish between what should be in the boardroom and what should be in the administrator's office. Lastly, very tongue-in-cheek, but in all, in most, all of my working life, I've never experienced PTO. You know, I I didn't get paid if I was off, so I just. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to check out this temporary PTO policy, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
And we'll let you get on with your research. I don't think we have any old business to consider, and then under under board governance, I mentioned that next meeting we will have some discussion about ARPA funds. And then legislatively, Larry, thoughts with regard to what you heard, or I assume you heard from KLPG the other day? Because that, to me, falls under board governance as legislative things, or?
Probably the best summary would be what they publish in their newsletter, and I checked with them about getting on their website, and I reset my password and didn't have any trouble at all, so I don't know what to tell you if you can't get it.
I still don't know why we have to have a password.
It's it's just the way the system's set up.
For paid members, I think.
You know, paid members, and then they know exactly who's receiving the information. But I, you know, it wasn't that difficult. I've got a copy of the current one if somebody wants it.
Thing I would add legislatively, we need to continue to keep an eye out for what might be happening with revisions to the current law that was passed a year ago with regard to the, oh, what's my terminology, Dory?
Senate Bill thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, but what's?
Revenue neutral?
The revenue neutral rate, because there was some action in committee just in the last few days to, for some additional reporting and so forth, and for a mechanism to file complaints against county commissioners and city commissioners and so forth. But they're trying to hash out who gets to file the complaint, what would that look like, and so forth and so on, so we need to continue to keep an eye on that, that piece of legislation as far as counties are concerned. Also, I was asked the other day with regard to the demand transfers on whether or not KAC could challenge that not being done because they violated a or breached a contractual agreement or statutory agreement, so I have not checked on that yet, whether KAC could challenge that on our behalf or not, but I will be doing so. But from a legislative standpoint or any governance, a couple governance things that came up with Dave's comment looking into what's what's in the boardroom and what's in the administrator's office, I think we need to continue that conversation from a governance perspective as well. But anything else from a board governance topic today? All right, if not, then we move on to administrator report.
Very good, I've got a little bit of catching up to do, working with Kurt on a few projects as well, and once again, we'll begin the process of getting prepared for your April fourth meeting as it relates to your ARPA funds and listening to that discussion and where the board is headed with their decision on that. headed with their decision on that. Okay.
All right, and then we had some department monthly reports in our packet, and any questions or anything arise that you need to address with the administrator from those reports? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go into commissioner reports, and Larry, let's start with you.
Let's see, I attended the legislative coffee Saturday. I I laid a piece of information in front of each of his desk that our representative in Cliffordum was was quite interested in, and it deals with these funds that were supposed to be allocated to cities and counties from the state and have, needless to say, since oh-four, have not been sent out to us. And it gives you a kind of a breakdown of each of the funds, the amount of the money, and it's interesting. Here, the state's got excess money, yet they're still not wanting to fund these required, or so-called required expenses. Also, had a a meeting with the Committee on Aging. Don't think there was anything new that came out of that that was very exciting. We're all getting older.
Really? Now, that's profound.
Yeah. And nobody interrupted the meeting, so it was it was good. But also, I've got a Workforce One meeting Friday. Zoom and Scott, I would, I would guess would be on that meeting too, won't he? Since he's nominated to take your your position. Okay, well, I think he will be nominated and elected at that meeting.
I think that, yeah, the vote takes place.
Yeah, we'll. So if we ever do go back to driving the Great Bend, I'll have somebody to go with. Okay. I think that's it. Bob?
Had the opportunity to meet with the Extension Board, very strong, active, vibrant group. I think overall, going through the financials, they're they're very well established and are very fiduciary in what they're doing. I love the enthusiasm that they have for youth and the 4H and and all of the forward thinking that's going on. Really anxious to get a little more involved. Had the opportunity to to meet with Kurt and Larry on a particular drainage-type situation and watch the professionals research out in Southwind on a particular project area where one of the new tenants is there and questioning how the everything is set up to drain and and the approach that the county staff took upon that. Still not resolved, but but a very, very good address to get started. So, that's really all I had.
Dave?
Well, a handful, but not many meetings. Local Emergency Planning Committee meets every two months. We have had a meeting a week ago. I'm impressed by the participation and by particularly the leadership of the Local Emergency Planning Committee. It happened to be our new emergency manager's second day on the job, so poor old Paul was a little bit lost, but he was introduced. And the only other thing out of that meeting that I probably need to share, if you're interested on storm spot or awareness training that the National Weather Service puts on, that will be in in Garden City on April seven, at the Fairgrounds Grandstand Meeting Room, and on April seven, two times, three o'clock in the afternoon, and seven o'clock PM, and each of those sessions lasts about an hour and fifteen, twenty minutes, something like that, but very interesting. That that meeting handled legislative coffee. We think about all of us were there, and then I had a library board meeting scheduled for tonight, and and so I'll, at five o'clock, if anybody'd like to join. And then I want to make a passing comment, and this is not meant as criticism, but for years, I attended the Planning Commission, and Bob, you were named to that by law, and and so I have not gone. I didn't want to step into your territory, but when you're not able to attend, I didn't hear you report that you were there. When you're not able to attend, if you'd let me know, I'd be happy to go for you. So, just an offer. That's it.
Hey, Dwayne?
Again, I went to the legislative coffee, like many of you. Good information. Great Plains Development had their audit presentation. Spent forty-five minutes with the auditing firm. They passed flying colors and actually showed it really profit. COVID was very good for the Great Plains Development Company. So, finally made some money, and it was all audited and came out great. Convention and Visitors Bureau attended their monthly meeting. I think they approved two new upcoming events, one with a very minor benefit back to the community, and one was fairly major, so that was that was good. Did not able to attend the Fair Board meeting, but I visited with Roxanne after the fact, and their Fair Board book has hit the publisher and are discussing discussing now on awards, primarily buckles and contributions, outside contributions to the Fannie County Fair. That's what's going on with that board right now.
Okay. Couple of things you mentioned remind me and reminded me, and up on the screen are some of the meetings that that Dory has compiled. One of them, put it down toward the bottom, is the Fannie County Fair in July, but also following that are two pages, I believe it is, two pages of community events that are taking place, when you mentioned CBB, and I think it's really nice to have that expanded list of community events at our disposal, so that we can participate if we'd like to, or at least get the word out that those things are happening. So, yeah, they're the upcoming community events. So I appreciate that expansion of that list, Dory, and gathering that information. Dave, I think you had something that'll come to.
I'm sorry, one thing I missed, and I want to just give an accolade to our assessor's office. Just right after our last meeting, and about the day after the assessed values came out, we all heard from some of the constituents, but I had a an email from a lady that was questioning why the a piece of property went up last year four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, and this year up twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And so, I sat down and and responded to her email by saying mine went up too, and in fact, that morning, at our meeting, our county appraiser was here, and she mentioned that that values of homes went up about ten percent in this county and seventeen percent in in Johnson County, and that they would welcome phone calls to try to explain what was going on. Sent that to her. Well, I also sent a copy to Marie, and and here's where my accolade is. Without anything else being said, Marie sent this lady her comps and an invitation to for a visit and so on. To me, that's customer service. We don't like to see our taxes go up, but I like the way she handled it. That's it.
Yeah, thank you for that. Dwayne, you had something?
And my follow-up, as you mentioned with the upcoming events, Convention and Visitor Bureau would like to point out that the Charity Classic, which is a great big event, April twenty-fifth to May first, is coming up, and volunteers for these golfers is greatly appreciated. So anybody would like to volunteer to help with that classic, they would really appreciate that.
That's part of what I learned at the Chamber Breakfast I attended last week, is they're looking for volunteers yet for that, and you don't even have to know golf, Larry.
No, I'm not volunteering, but I do have one one more comment before you're done, when you're done.
Oh, go ahead.
I, you know, Dave was giving accolades. I think I need to give an accolade to Dory. I had a disgruntled patron, you know, complaining about our election process and turned it over to Dory, and she said, handled it, I thought, very diplomatically by saying, oh, we're always looking for volunteers to come work our election tables. I thought, way to go, Dory, that's way to.
And what better way to see how elections work than to?
Yeah, be there in person. So, I think that's that's a great way to handle somebody that's got a burr under their saddle.
Yeah, 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 invite them to volunteer. Bob, any follow-up from you?
No, thank you.
The other, the other thing I wanted to mention from my perspective is I did attend the Groundwater Management District Annual Meeting over in Cimarron. I don't know when that was, a week and a half ago or so, but as you would, as you would imagine, the subject was water, and what do we do about lack of water out here? And the the phrase that caught my attention, and I don't remember now if it was Mark Root or one of the other speakers from Topeka, but they said, we've got to quit using the the term, the word sustainability, and begin using the phrase conserve and extend. And we're conserving what we have, and we're trying to extend the life of of water sources out here in the future. And I thought, it really caught my attention, and it really maybe says it better than sustainability. So I'm going to start using that phrase as I go forward when we're talking about water issues. The last thing is, I I mentioned to you last time that I believe I was called to be be a convener of things, not make the decisions about certain topics, but bring the players together, kind in the spirit that Bob was talking about on another subject earlier today. And I brought a group together on our Blackbird Starling issue, which is an issue throughout the county, and business and extension and case state and in USDA, and I'm to get a report back very soon, and when I when I do, I'll be bringing that report both to this body, to the city body, and extension, and and so forth, to the various stakeholders involved, to see if we might address that. And then also, I did convene a group with regard to convention, conference, trade show space is the way I headed the the topic, and there's, we began good discussion, and there will be a follow-up session with that group to, and then from that group, we'll go to the particular governing bodies with some ideas, hopefully, not too distant future. So, we're starting discussions on some of those things. The convention conference thing is not a new discussion. Matter of fact, I've been in town for forty years, and I think it's been going on most of that forty years that I've been in town, but how does that play into the ARPA funds with regard to maybe improving the exhibition building for our shelter space in the community, but does it fit into other things that we might have on the horizon? And then lastly, the college has some things going on with conference space at this particular time that I don't think Ryan would mind me mentioning here. So, those are the things that I picked up with regard to the meetings that I was attending just recently. And then lastly, just to let you know that our Congressman Tracy Mann is in the area. There's an event tonight at six o'clock. If anyone who wants to come, I think there'd still be room, but I saw him early this morning, and he's making stops throughout the area to, especially with regard to agriculture, and he has a special guest with him that he's showing our our part of Kansas. Anything else for the good of the order before we go into some executive sessions? If not, I have asked for two executive sessions, and the first one, and I understand from Dory, that our counsel will be with us by telephone, not in person, so I don't know what room will be in for for that, but we need to have about, I think, fifteen minutes probably for that discussion, and it's mainly a a report from her on an attorney-client matter. So, I would entertain a motion that, oh, yeah, Kelly's Kelly's shaking her head, fifteen minutes should be up to fifteen minutes, should be an appropriate timeframe. And in that session would be our our legal counsel by phone, Robert and Kelly, and as well as board members.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor of going into executive session for a period up to fifteen minutes for discussion, attorney-client privilege, if you will? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. We will reconvene at eleven thirty-five, no later than eleven thirty-five. All opposed, nay. We will reconvene at 11:35, no later than 11:35.
...